Commissions committee of the record show all members present with the exception of Alderman Panis. I'll make a motion for the approval of the meetings from Tuesday, March fourth and second. Second by Alderman Stagel. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business, the North Union Street lighting bill prior to the budget you were supposed to be meeting with.
Yes. So, we met with a Walter Klub of Magda Light Solutions or Magda Flood. He's out of Andyville, New York. He came here, he looked through what we had, looked at the situation here. And he took a strand of lights back with him and he didn't reach back out to us. And he believes he can help us get the lighting going there. These are, he says these are ballpark costs. Option one would be $12,000 to create wireless mesh network between all the poles. To get them all connected and controlled with lights and with a phone or a tablet from any pole. Option two would be $9,000 to control each pole individually with a phone or a tablet. And a, it would be $1,000 to provide equipment to test on site to make sure everything will work accordingly. So, because of our procurement policy, we would have to get two other bids on this. I'm researching now whether the, I think, I believe, if I'm not wrong, the county council can weigh the procurement policy. But we'll let the city attorney make a determination on that. And so, he's quite confident, we talked to him, that he could get our lights going. We have money in, what account is that?
201.
201, which is, was part of the North Union Street.
Yeah, $86,000 right now.
Yeah, so we still have $86,000 in that as part of the weight binding that we have there. So, we can get them, we believe we can get them going.
Just a minute.
Yep, I did have two questions, but now, I was wondering about procurement policy. I thought the amount was a larger amount that we would have to get quotes. It was like around 20K or something, maybe I'm too high.
That's for public works projects? But, part of the policy is that if it's, if it's at a certain, we don't have to go to bid, we have to get quotes.
Okay.
So, this falls within that, so we'd have to get, or attempt to get quotes from other, some other vendors.
Did you have a second one, or you're good?
Nope, Len's actually answered the second one. I was wondering if we had money left over from the initial. But if we have 86K left over from the weight finding balance, that should be sufficient.
Dave?
The next question I have, is I probably can't talk about it much, but is this under, still under litigation from the guy that put these lights up in the first place? And took our equipment, or whatever he took that he didn't even let?
The short answer is, we, we can do a, yes, we can, there's a process we can go through.
It's ideal.
So, is this the 12,000 or the 9,000, is that for software?
It's for the components needed to put on each of the poles so we can ease that up.
So, more or less hardware, not necessarily the software?
Sorry?
So, more or less the hardware for it, not necessarily the software to run it?
That would be part of the package, part of the, it'll be, it'll be on a tablet. Or, it won't be as sophisticated as what was originally proposed.
Sounds like both, that's your question.
Yeah, so then it would be either the 12,000 and 9,000 plus the 1,000 to test on site? So, it'd be either 13 or 10?
And that's ballpark, there may be a little more than that. Those are ballpark figures. But we could get an, if we're interested, we can narrow them down to a better figure.
Is there a way to know if they still work after all this time before we invest money?
I'll have to ask you, just as we take a test.
Just because they've been hanging up there, so.
Looking like that neighbor that leaves your Christmas lights on all year.
You know.
I was just gonna ask, what, so if we move forward, what's the timeline? Like, how long would it take him to get all everything in place to go?
We'll have to get with him on that if we're gonna move forward with this.
Anything else? I guess I would be in favor, just to get the actual quotes with other numbers.
Sounds good.
You good with that though?
Yep.
No new referrals, no community reports, I'll make a motion for a adjournment second.
Second.
Alderman Stagel, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll call to order the finance committee meeting for Tuesday, May 6th. Let the record show that Alderman are present with the exception of Alderman Panis. Approval is the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, April 8th. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Under unfinished business, we have the Marcus Park funding.
Was this you, Mayor? Did you have any update on Marcus Park funding?
What I can update you on is I had a meeting with our legislators and I met with three of them. And we reviewed the plan of the three I met, was Ricky Smith, Steve Teasman, and Kelly Andriano. And they indicated they liked the plan and they were gonna go back to the county. We requested $200,000 from the county. They're gonna go back to their county and start talking about this. And I offered to go to the county and put a presentation on about the park, so they were gonna let me know on that.
Anything else regarding Marcus Park and funding?
No.
Okay, anything else from, okay, so, Mayor, should we put this back on for two weeks to kind of see, or? Okay, so we'll put it back on for two weeks.
I'm trying to get an update right now.
Okay. New referrals for consideration, capital fund, bed tax. Mayor?
You just wanna report on this, is that?
Um, I didn't, yeah.
That was disgusting, I don't remember who put it on, or we...
We can, we can, just the budget.
During the budget, someone mentioned wanting to put the...
Yes, to put together a capital fund.
Well, Len's can give, Len's can give a report on what we received from the first amount.
So far, we've received 10,000 and change.
Talking to the microphone.
Remember, we started, bed tax started in March, started to be collected as of March 15th?
Yes, we received from the hotel and two Airbnbs. I think the total is 10,000 and change. More than we have in the quarter, unless.
So...
Started in March 15th, and the quarter started on January, till April 31st.
The next report to do when?
April 28th, that was when we do, yeah.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
April 28th, that's when we do.
Does that follow the sales tax with that?
No. I think it's April, and the other one is gonna be June, September, then December. It's every quarter.
We can, we can email you guys what we got back from the, the two hotels and the Airbnb, so you can see how we're doing it.
And now I remember, we were looking to put together a capital project so that that money would be earmarked in part for community development. And I think there was something else that we had, had talked about.
We talked about the signings, like, how do we sign?
Yes, to be able to, so.
Yeah, curious, we'll do some research on that, so if you want, at the next committee meeting, we can give you a report on that.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. What do we wanna do about putting that? Because we did talk about putting that into a capital project so that we could utilize that, those dollars for marketing, those kinds of things. Thoughts?
I'm not opposed.
Let me, let me just interject this. When we built the budget, the buses are costing us $30,000. Okay, so, plan was to use the bed tax money in the community development office to offset that. So, we, if we want, up to you, if you guys would like, we can take a percentage of the bed tax money and put it into a, a account. A capital account for economic development.
If you just create a community development capital fund, you could still just approve to pay it out of there, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Still put the whole thing in, then just approve and pay it out of that capital fund, just by calling it a community development capital fund. But Len's is excited to monitor another one.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, you know, the purpose of the bed tax is to kind of reinvest in the marketing and bringing tourism and supporting the hotels and bringing people here. So, I don't wanna lose sight of that either, right? So, we wanna reinvest in, to those hotels and in the marketing and advertising to get people here as well. So, whatever that looks, I mean, no, we don't have a capital project per se for that. So, if that, from like an economic development standpoint, just to make sure some of that, a percentage of that is geared, not that the buses aren't important, but, you know, those hotels are serving not necessarily the people here. They're, you know, they're bringing people who are coming in and spending dollars in the community, ideally.
So, I, I actually like the idea of a capital fund, putting it in there and then taking what's needed for the buses out. And that would kind of leave and then we could build on that balance of what's left. Thoughts on that?
There's only, there's one thing you should also keep in mind, though. We built the budget with $104,000 from bed tax. So, if we take everything out of that in the general fund, that will leave the whole revenue from the general fund itself. Just something to keep in mind.
So, we put 104 in for...
That's why we put in, to balance the budget before revenue, so 104,000 expected to get in bed tax.
And so, basically, in this quarter, though, we have... And so basically in this quarter, though, we have we have a month and we got, right, did you say it starts?
So what we received this past quarter, all this amount could go to a capital project, cause we didn't have have that in the budget for this past, well, this coming fiscal year we're working on. But the next fiscal year, we accounted a hundred and four in revenue with that money in the budget for next year. I mean, we could move some of it, um but we gotta keep in mind that we'll take away from the general revenue.
Well, take away from the general revenue, the purpose of it, like Jen said, is to stimulate economic growth and that. It's supposed to be used for that, not earmarked to balance the general fund budget.
Well, we did the budget, we used it to balance the budget.
But those hotels are charging that extra tax and and they're gonna come back like, hey, we collected this bed tax, we need X, Y, Z to, you know, signage or whatever that looks like.
When we set it up with the state, we we said we use it for economic development and tourism.
Right. Which I agree, that's where it fits. When your economic development, though, is stimulating our economy, which obviously relates to tourism.
So I think I'm still mindful to to set up the capital fund, put in what's this year's, that is not attached to the budget revisiting the budget component. As we came up with the hundred and fours, I remember based on what the county had kind of um based on county figures, correct? Is what we anticipated. So I do think we have to be mindful and figure out how to utilize those dollars for community development.
Create the capital account, if they need the money that falls under economic growth and development, prove the expenditure, if it doesn't, don't.
I'm gonna agree, Jay, um I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on this, if we need to come back and revisit uh that topic, we can. But if we, the council and the PL was created and it went to the state and it was for economic development, uh to use it for generating revenue for anything uh is opposite of what we were looking to do with it. So I'm just looking to say, well, I'm not really concerned about the hundred K. We don't know what's gonna happen uh with next year's budget, if revenues can be drawn from other things. I mean, we're about to start the budget here in what, less than a month? And we haven't heard anything about the meters being started yet. And I know we have a hundred and four thousand slated for revenue for that or something like that, so um.
That's what I thought that number came from, because I did not remember the bed tax and we had the hundred and four was for. So can you can you check that, because I remember a hundred and four was specifically for the parking.
Parking, that I recall anyway, but I just, I would prefer to have a capital uh fund. And then if we later decide that, hey, you know, if we could uh help pay the school portion from that, then we can later do that. But again, as as Alderman said, economic development and whatever other tags we had on there initially.
Well, early on, we started talking about this, it was talked about also, you know, running the economic development office to uh help with that, so. So that's it, and uh the parking unit is not on the agenda tonight.
Right.
How how people you guys are reporting on that?
The same, it's it's I come from the three zero zero four, it's one oh four, a hundred and four thousand dollars to get in the budget.
Okay.
I don't, but do you have to come and put it? If you look on page thirty five. So at the bottom?
Yep, bed tax. Thanks. So what I'm hearing is to put together the capital project?
Capital.
And place the monies in there, if there are monies directly related to um marketing and um community development.
As the mayor said, it would come out of.
And just to to clarify, the parking is hundred, a hundred thousand?
A hundred thousand for parking. What line is that, Lenz, just so I can?
Around seventeen forty one.
Seventeen forty one, thank you. And we should get that on the agenda for the next committee meeting.
Parking meter, are the parking, you mean?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, that if we're gonna get that kind of number, we're gonna need to get that going. We still have procurement and I'm sure to do.
Well, I think we still have some more discussion on that, so. Okay, so capital project?
Yep, that's fine with me.
Okay. Number seven hundred and sixty two. Okay, any other?
The exact amount that we will save is ten thousand, seven thirty two and sixty cents so far.
That's just for one month?
No, of course, that's just about fifteen.
A partial quarter.
It's a partial quarter.
Yeah.
Cause we started.
Start in March fifteenth.
Yeah, we started the program in March fifteenth.
March fifteenth to April thirtieth, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So about a month and a half.
So we have two hotels and three Airbnbs that get us.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Did you say one hotel, two Airbnbs, or two hotel cells? Okay, that's right.
Yeah, someone said one earlier.
What the?
That's what I.
Okay, good, that's why not just me, okay, any other discussion? Okay. Next, we have retaining a fourth ambulance.
Chief. Hi, so um I am here to discuss, um we took delivery of a new ambulance back in the end of April. And typically, we trade the oldest ambulance in, um and we've historically had three ambulances. Because of call volume, um I'm I'm seeking your approval to keep to retain the oldest ambulance, so that we have a reserve ambulance. There's numerous benefits to this, I I think it's a really good strategic move um to to keep a fourth ambulance as a reserve unit. Right now, the the um the back of ambulances do about three hundred fifty calls a year each. So if one of those ambulances go goes down, for instance, we had a an accident back in January. One of the ambulances was parked in front of the Olean House, a box truck side swiped it, and it has to go out of service for about a month for bodywork. So there would be a month that we would be down in ambulance, whereas if we had a a reserve ambulance that we could put into service when this happens, you know, it would definitely make it easier for us and it would it would fill that up that service gap. Uh the trade in value, if we were to trade it in, is um just an estimate, he did not give the firm number yet, but he thinks around twenty five thousand. Typically, when we trade the trade these ambulances in, it just reduces the sticker price of the new one. So if um if you guys don't approve of me doing this, then I I would think that that twenty five thousand dollars could go to the the ambulance reserve account to help with our next purchase, but that account right now is is pretty healthy, so I think we're safe financially to go ahead and do this.
So when you say pretty healthy, do you know how much is in the ambulance?
Um it's about ninety thousand after paying for this ambulance.
So we would have ninety thousand left in it if we didn't, if we retained the current ambulance and the new ambulance, yes?
We're adding about twelve thousand dollars a a month into that ambulance reserve from the fees.
Right now, it's at one oh three five thirty six point ninety one. Cause we just added air airbus revenue last week.
I have two questions, wh- what is the average cost of a new ambulance again? Isn't it like a quart of milk?
Um yes, it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and change.
Thirty two K average, just the average cost. And then I was just reading today how because of tariffs, uh auto prices are up seven K. Or I'm sorry, not seven K, seven percent. So if vehicle costs are up seven percent, wouldn't that make it a good opportunity to capitalize on getting more money for an a used ambulance versus waiting and kicking it down the road? When everything settles back down to no tariffs, then we'll get less for the vehicle, plus counting it's older in years, regardless of the miles. We can get more bang for our buck now?
Perhaps.
You're saying if we sell it versus retain it as a spare?
We can get more money now than we can down the road, because right now, the tariffs are creating a higher amount for vehicles, therefore, the vehicles are worth more. And then having a fourth ambulance, uh contracted services, would that have an effect on them as far as helping us, or is it? I mean, this is where I'm I'm not too knowledgeable in all honesty. Does that help the the ambulance contracted services here, knowing the, I can't think of the name, I'm sorry. On uh, second?
You're talking about the mutual aid plan?
Trans.
Trans.
Um not directly, I don't think, um it's not gonna necessarily help them. Primarily, it's it's gonna give us some depth of our, you know, fleet, some resiliency. You know, like I said, when one ambulance goes down, we're gonna be able to get this ambulance into service. Our plan is to, so all our current three ambulances are ALS, like the higher level, um equipment and everything, they're equipped to that higher level. We're gonna equip this one to the BLS standard, which is a lower level. But when an ALS ambulance goes out of service, we would just move that ALS equipment over. So it would be in service, it would be able to be to respond as a BLS unit. Our engine, one of our engines is set up as an ALS engine, so the engine could go meet them, move the equipment over, treat the patient. So that that's a way for us to to kind of cut the costs, have a reserve unit available for us. Also, we're planning on using it for football games and hockey standbys. So right now, when whenever there's a football game over at Braders and you see one of our ambulances, that's one of our ambulances that that's dedicated to that game and it cannot leave. By by state law, I believe, um so that that's another factor that um to have that that act.
So I I recall reading that in the fleet minutes, and I'm not opposed to that, as long as the city's saying, yes, we will keep this ambulance forever. And just say, you know what, we're not gonna get rid of it, we'll just keep it and it can just become an antique or something. If it's gonna stay and we're just gonna use it for that purpose of of parades, things like that, then I I think it'd be more beneficial to sell it and get, like I said, the more bang for our buck. But I mean, I'm not opposed to keeping it, especially if we have a place to house it, be able to maintain it. And then, you know, again, if there's an unfortunate incident where there is an accident, then we have something to fall back on, and I'm not opposed to that. But um it's it's just one of the things where me personally, I don't know, i- if if the maintenance costs are gonna cost us more, to maintain, pay insurance on it, I'm sure we have to pay insurance on it. Then would it become a costly just in case, or or no?
Alderman, Anastasia.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna ask is, this what's the condition of the ambulance, is it in good condition, how many miles are on it, is it worth keeping, in your opinion?
Um all the ambulances have relatively low miles, um we we track them more by hours because they idle a lot. It it is in good condition, um my plan would be, you know, instead of replacing the oldest of of the three ambulances every two to three years, we would be replacing the the fourth ambulance every two or three years. So we're we're basically just increasing our fleet by one in three years, or if we buy a new ambulance, we would just be replacing this oldest one that we're choosing to keep now.
Do you have storage for it?
We do have storage, and I also talked to Ray about how this would affect him, um and he's he said, you know, right now, when an ambulance goes down for routine service or repair, you know, the mechanics kind of prioritize the fire and police vehicles to get them back on the road for us, as opposed to all of their other work. So this would give him a little bit of breathing room, you know, if a repair is gonna take a few days, then it's not a huge deal, for kind of especially being down a mechanic this year.
Well, it seems to me like, just my opinion, if a new ambulance costs two hundred and three two thousand, and Ray's gonna get twenty five K for this, it sounds like it would be beneficial to keep it.
And even if we got seven percent greater, that's sixteen hundred and fifty dollars, so it would be like a twenty six, six fifty, which is about ten percent of an ambulance. So I'm of the mind that probably keeping it serves us better than, other thoughts?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, none, I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? By Alderman Anastasia, all in favor, opposed?
All right, I'll call Public Safety Committee uh to order. Approval of amendments from the previous committee meeting. Roll call, thank you, I'm sitting here like, what are you forgetting?
Uh let the record show, all committee members are present, uh with the exception of Pence. Uh approval of the minutes from Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, uh I'll make a motion, can I get a second? Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh unfinished business, we have none, uh new referrals, we have the zoning board uh for short term rentals. This came up, uh the chief brought this up during uh the budget meeting, uh and the reasoning was to remove the zoning board uh from the code, uh and its section twelve dash eight eighty nine permit applications. With Code Enforcement Office shall refer any application for a short term rental unit located in our one, two, and three of the zoning board to the zoning board to determine the suitability of the STR unit at a proposed location. We got to the council meeting and it was uh Resolution twenty nine dash twenty five, PL twenty nine dash twenty five. It was sponsored by Crawford and Bingham, uh to amend City of Olean ordinance section twelve dash eighty nine to remove that requirement for short term rentals uh for the zoning board appeals. Uh the reason why I wanted to halt that is because after sitting and thinking on it for a while, I came up with my own list of pros and cons for why this should not happen. Uh the pros to keeping it with the zoning board was that the zoning board has a non-political and objective view of the applications in the public forum. And uh I believe that that is there for a reason why it was written that way in the first place, to go directly to the zoning board. Uh as far as uh protection of the neighborhoods, you know, I I I felt that when you look at codes and when you have our current residents that write in and request things from our codes, and we have policies that they have to follow before they can just act, and a lot of times, you'll have a lot of residents that'll complain about that. But they're only doing their job according to the pol- according to the policies that are put in place. Whereas if residents were to complain with the zoning board, then there's potential for uh that Airbnb or or short term rental to lose their license or their privileges a lot sooner, a lot faster. Also, when it comes to the neighbors, uh if there is a Airbnb that's coming, that's gonna be. that's gonna be potentially my neighbor, it will be posted in the zoning board. I can go to that meeting and I can present my thoughts, my, my, my feelings on having an Airbnb next door to me that can potentially halt that from coming, uh, to whatever residential area that it may be in. Uh, and then the zoning board can also slow down the process and mitigate using codes and, uh, New York state law. Uh, some of the cons that I had for codes, current issues we see in neighborhoods, again, uh, you know, we hear all the time the codes say we don't have any teeth, uh, but we just had the chief present to us an email here during budget time where they were saying that there are some things that we have, uh, brought forward, that they've brought forward, that we've been able to add more teeth to. But to me, uh, it's not good enough. Uh, and then too many times we hear, uh, from our constituents, we reach out to codes and they can't do anything. And again, I think that's a frustration thing that we have with our residents with codes. Uh, that codes is just doing their job according to the policy and the timeframe that they have to follow according to state law. Uh, putting an Airbnb under codes could lead to issues that lead to fines, but zoning board could revoke, uh, those approvals. Um, and then just the fact that zoning board was put there in place for a reason, uh, and they're just cutting that out and going right to codes, I just think that's just a bad idea altogether. So that's where I stand with that. I felt like there were other things that we need to discuss and, uh, put some more, uh, thought into it before we brought it back, uh, before the council revoked. But, uh, as I stand right now, I would rather see this in front of the zoning board, not our codes. Thoughts? Yep, Derek?
I see your point, but any issues, zoning board appeals is not an enforcement. So ultimately, it's still gonna go back to codes. Zoning board appeals would be that if they're not allowed in R two, for instance, they can go to the zoning board and appeal that and say, I wanna put this on an R two for these specific reasons. Zoning board can then grant that. If they then have code issues, zoning board appeals doesn't do anything with that. It's gonna go right back to codes, who's ultimately gonna be the enforcement wing. So that's why, I mean, for me, it's easier to just leave it if it's allowed in that area in codes and then just use the enforcement of it. You know, we, I believe, have to ask probably Bridget, but, you know, I mean, with enough codes complaints, I believe that they could probably, even if it's allowable, um, in an allowable area, right, residence, that they can probably still remove that. You know, if there's a number, one, two, three, some number. Ryan, can you weigh in on this? Is there a number? If you're, if I have a, uh, short-term rental in R one, it's allowed and I have so many code issues, can, can that short-term rental then be disapproved?
We can revoke the permit if we get three separate complaints over three days within a three hundred and sixty-five day period. Calendar year.
Okay, say that again, three, three complaints within?
Three days.
Three days.
So whether it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or June first, July seventh, September third. That's within a calendar year, your permit's not.
Okay, so three within a calendar year?
But I can't come hit you day one and get you for like three violations right off the bat.
Right.
Basically, three occurrences?
Correct.
Yep, so, and then doesn't, uh, the zoning board? If you have, let's say they didn't have the three, maybe they had more, uh. I'm trying to think. I know there was, uh, Airbnb that were, that had numerous complaints in, in Ward three. And it had to have been more than three. And were they revoked?
No, because that was prior to the Airbnb law.
Okay, and so then we have that. So if, if the zoning board was the group that approved it, they have the ability to revoke as well, correct?
Tech- technically, if they get a complaint and they wanna revoke something, they would have to refer it to our office and say, hey, we're removing this variance.
And then once, yes, and once they remove that variance, then it's automatically revoked, correct? Yeah, so to me, it just seems, again, so they already have it in their possession, so why remove it to put it in the codes? We're talking about adding extra bodies to codes because they haven't overbunted the work, but we're giving them more work. I don't understand. Mayor?
If I may, uh, there would also be due process, you know, go back to the zoning board. But we just went through a situation with the zoning board that they gave a variance and in order to change it, they had to, uh, it had to be unanimous to change it. So I, that's something I think should be researched.
Okay.
That, that could cause an issue too.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
So the zoning board would have to be unanimous, whereas in this case, codes, it would be just the, the threshold or whatever the law states, the procedure that we have in place. If there's three within a year, then individual instances.
And I'm, I'm going from the one situation, so we would need a ruling, uh, on the zoning board on, or whether all things have to be unanimous once they're approved.
So is it possible to get? Hey, I don't know, maybe I'm just going too far into it. All right, well, I presented what I needed to present, um.
So one of the things that I had looked at is that, you know, maybe we want to think, I mean, some people, some of the towns have what's called short-term rental overlay zones and the other is that they have sometimes different, um, requirements, fines, et cetera, based on if the owner is on present. So if the owner kind of lives there and is there versus non-owner resident, so, you know. So I think there's maybe some more to explore because I think more and more, we're gonna have more and we're not gonna have less. It's, it's a economical way for people who don't want to maybe stay in a hotel or motel to be able to do it. Um, but maybe we need to also revisit kind of the overall structure of that and, and see, um, if it, if it fits for where we are at this moment in time.
I do recall we mentioned that if we did pass this, that we were gonna go back and revisit that section. So, I mean, if, if that's the case, then mayor?
Now, I think a little more, uh, it, it may be that the vote, if the zoning board is unanimous and there's a decision, then they have to be unanimous to change it. I think that's the way it is.
Okay.
But I'll have, I'll have Bridget research that.
Okay. I mean, before we vote on it, I'd like everyone to have all the information first instead of just going in and then changing it, but Anastasia?
No.
Oh, I thought you were gonna raise your finger. All right, anyone else? All right, well, we can put this back on for a couple of weeks and, uh, get the response from the mayor on that. And, uh, you know, if we need to get something, maybe someone from zoning board may have something to chime in. Uh, we've heard from Ryan, from codes, maybe he can come back if needed and then we can go from there. Uh, so moving on, drainage issues on three oh nine, three fifteen, East Oak Street?
Yeah, that would be down on my word. I got some pictures to share with you guys. But actually, a little synopsis of the story, I started back in, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty timeframe. I met down there with, uh, Bob Ring and Brett Camp. And, uh, at that time, he was having flooding issues and he's, uh, Bob Ring recommended that they put a storm sewer on the corner of Oak and Ash Street, which never came to fruition. Now, last summer, last spring, they repaved Oak Street. And on that first picture that you see, uh, you can see how it, uh, the pavement was raised about, I would say, two and a half, three inches above the driveway line. And what that is doing is causing one hell of a nightmare for the guy in the corner because every time it rains, there's a grade there on Oak Street and all the water is running down the curb line. Uh, curb was removed in front of, uh, the last house on the corner because the road got so high. But the water is running right down the driveway and going down the neighbor's driveway. That's not his driveway, that's the neighbor's driveway. And it's flooding his backyard and his front porch area and his foundation during heavy rainstorms because ever since the road was repaid. So, uh, the mayor asked, uh, to have Dave Crandall give us an estimate of what it would cost to repair or solve this problem. And, and that was back in March, Dave sent us, uh, sent, uh, the other, the deputy director, uh, an email stating that, uh, there's three phases to it. And to make a long story short, it'd be about sixty-seven hundred dollars to have that, uh, problem remedied. And as you can see the pictures, the water is running down the neighbor's driveway, which is to the backyard. And I, I don't have any pictures of the ones in the front of the guy's house, but it's running his front porch, ruining his concrete steps, his concrete platter. And it's starting to seep into his basement at some certain, certain rainstorms. So it's, it did cause a one hell of a problem for the guy. And what I was asking is if we could get some funding, uh, we, you guys talked about it when I was sick, I think about a month ago. And the mayor had mentioned that we might be able to take the funding out of the storm sewer account surplus. And if you think six thousand dollars is too expensive, uh, in the proposal from Dave Crandall, he was, uh, talking about replacing that driveway in that picture, just the apron part with concrete, uh, blacktop is a lot cheaper. So we could probably replace that driveway. It's blacktop now, we can replace it with blacktop.
I think blacktop makes sense.
This, this issue's been going on for a long time, like Dave said, Mr. Vander Walker, uh, and his neighbor there, this is an issue. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, why the, uh, why it wasn't taken care of, but the other, the other, the other street there, what's the name of that street?
Ash Street.
Ash Street. Yeah, because it was running there and going into the backyard, it was there. Uh, but this is something that, uh, uh, Mr. Vander Walker has, has, uh, has asked us to repair, uh, to do for, uh, several months. Uh, and, uh, I'd like to see it, uh, get it taken, get it taken care of.
I was there yesterday and, um, at about six, six-thirty, when it started raining here in Olean. And it was like a river coming down Oak Street on that side and it was running down the neighbor's driveway there. And eventually, uh, it rained hard and I didn't stay to watch, but it was gonna go down the sidewalk right into, uh, Mr. Vander Walker's, uh, front porch area. And in the winter time, I did go down there too, when they had some, uh, snow melt. And the neighbor's driveway is covered, we can see where the blacktop's raised, it's covered with, uh, the solid ice. And I don't know who would be responsible for that, but that is on the city subway property. And the city caused a problem with that driveway in the winter time, it's nothing but, uh, that nice run.
So the engineer approved this? They, they, the engineer stated that replacing the apron would correct this issue?
I can read you his email here.
Yep. John, you got something?
I, yeah, um, so what I was gonna ask, I went by there and, um, so what I would like to get a better understanding about is the evaluation. Again, I'm not an engineer, but that yard is significantly lower. There's a, a, a low dip in that area. Um, and I don't know, um, like a lot of areas, residents buy properties and, and you know, they have low dips in, in area, uh, in their yards and expect us to put drainage because of that. Um, that happened before at a property, uh, in Dave's ward, um, that we dealt with a, a while ago. And I guess I, I question every time we have residents that have water because their yard is lower than the road, we need to specialize and, and put in special drainage because of that? So I, I, I just, when I went by there, have we had, when Dave Crandall evaluated it, um, did he send that report to all of us or just to you, Dave?
I think he's gonna take mayor and mayor, I'll go ahead to all of us.
Okay, I'll have to go back and take a look, but I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding about, you know, is it a factor of the city's responsible for it or when we get a lot of rain, there's a, a dent in the yard and the yard should be built up more, um, to handle the excess amount of water? So I guess that's, that's my question.
Do you recall, they said this was fine, but we're having, it was fine before the street got repaved. That picture shows, you can see on that first picture that I put on top, where the, uh,
Yep.
The road was much higher than the current driveway. And to me, it should have been a, a mistake by the engineering firm or the contractor that was hired to do that, uh, pavement job because he should have milled down deeper and kept the road even with the driveway. Now the road is two and a half to three inches higher than that apron of the driveway, causing the problem. The, uh, the fix that put into Dave Crandall's email was, uh, please see the following breakdown for your property, approximate cost. Uh, just number three oh nine, let's do the neighbor's address. Seventeen linear foot of curbing, he's saying, uh, thousand dollars. And a hundred and two square feet of bittenness driveway, two thousand dollars. For, uh, number three thirteen, I'm assuming it's an address, thirteen feet of linear yelp curbing at seven hundred dollars. And a hundred and forty-four square feet of concrete drive. So I would say instead of concrete, which is more expensive than blacktop, we could replace that driveway since it's, it's blacktop now, replace that apron.
But no drainage, there was nothing?
There's nothing there for drainage, no, but what he's saying, yeah, that's why the, uh, the problem with the curbing and the driveway, we can build up. So that, he, they would put that, Director Sprague could probably chime in on this. Basically, they, they're talking about they would put the curb with the, was it inch and a half, two inch at a driveway approach roughly? The idea is it's good for your car to go over, but the water should then flow by it. And then, so, so a couple of things. One, I would be leery of blaming a contractor because you can't sit here and say that that wasn't a layover. If that was just a layover, they weren't responsible to mill anything. So to say that that's on them is, you know, not good at this point unless you know that. Uh, and then I'm gonna agree with John, it's probably not gonna solve all of that water issue, some of that. If you have a low spot, we should, the city, if it's conveying water onto that approach of that sidewalk, then the city, then we should fix it for that. But, I mean, I don't wanna over-dramatize it and say that the lake in the back by the shed is from that because there could still be water laying there with a low spot and heavier rainfalls. So I don't have a problem with fixing the conveyance of water from the city street, causing the icing and on the sidewalk and the approach and that. And then just making sure that they understand that there could still be water back there from natural water shed. Well, I don't know if the new director had a chance to look at, into this or not yet, but what I would like to request from the committee is to get permission, is I'd like to have a P O submitted for possibly two weeks. And, uh, or whenever your, whenever your, whenever your setup was. What?
Tiffany was trying to tell you something.
I just got the email and it doesn't look like it was sent to the council, just.
Oh, it wasn't, I thought the mayor.
So you want me to have it counted for it to the council and?
Sure.
Just break something out of it?
Yeah, I got some, I got it from the mayor, so I thought I wanted to.
The last time we talked about it, I was, I missed it, I said I sent it out, I didn't.
And isn't that approach asphalt now?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, why replace it with concrete, just use an asphalt.
I think the general rule bill, maybe you could, if you replace the approach, they replace it with what's currently there anyways, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Can I ask, why are we doing, why, why are we doing, uh, an approach?
It's to solve that issue of with the drainage down that driveway.
I mean, probably half of Olean has that problem.
I mean, at best, they would just have to, again, Director Sprague can way in, trench it out, put the curbing in and then they could just patch the curb and they don't have to put a brand new approach in.
Right, because whatever, whatever.
They only gotta do enough to put the curb in to do the excavation to keep the water retained, the road. So I would rather have.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, we talk about this all the time, right? Like, just because of over time, the streets have been built up and built up and built up and half of Olean doesn't have curbing and half of Olean's approach has been, you know, it is, I have the same issue. They just paved, uh, the little tiny street there, uh, Warden Avenue. I have the exact same thing, the, uh, where the street now is higher than the, the approaches and the, the curb all along there. Um, it's a slippery slope if we're gonna get into addressing special curbing because I heard the same thing last year and I told them, well, you guys wanted the, the, a, a, a mill and pave. Um, so you got the mill and pave, but now they're having water issues too. I'm just, uh, we set a precedent, we're gonna start having to address this, uh, for all of our residents.
I'm gonna jump into this. I, I agree with what you're saying, it's a slippery slope, but at the same time. I, I agree with what you're saying, that it's a slippery slope, but at the same time, if the city hired a contractor, contractor comes in and creates an entirely new issue, uh, we can't expect to come out of our pockets to fix it. Um, but at the same time, I also agree with Benin that, uh, we don't need to give them concrete if they only have blacktop there now. We just need to correct the issue by creating a pathway for the drainage water to go down. Um, and, and I would be fine with that, uh, at, you know, sixty hun- sixty-seven hundred maximum. I would say if that's, because all I heard was a little bit, seven hundred, one thousand, seven hundred, one thousand, so if it's sixty-seven hundred maximum.
It would even be cheaper with, without the concrete.
Yeah, out of sewer contingency.
Is this an approved street?
The street last year, when it was done, it was done like it was, like the initial, it was, it was actually milled down and nothing, they took the whole street out and remodeled.
Isn't it approved, improved street with curbs?
Yeah.
Drainage?
Yeah, that's the only section that does it, I drove down the street last night to double check, that's the only section that there's no curbing on because the concrete, the blacktop is so high, the rest, the rest of the street has curves all the way down.
And that's the other thing for me, if we're gonna redo a street, put the curves back in, do the whole ninety yards instead of, to me, piecemealing it and creating these issues for people to have to turn around and come back and fight for, so.
You know that cost, right?
Uh, it's the city's fault, it's their problem.
Okay.
On the, the city's problem.
I'll be submitting a PL next week for, for Warden Avenue.
So I would, I mean, I guess I would like our DPW director to take a look at that because, and, and get his take on it before we do anything simply because of looking at where we might have other issues. Um, is that house, is that the house on the corner?
That's not his, that's not his driveway, that's the neighbor's driveway.
Right, but, okay, I, I saw it, but I wasn't sure which one we're actually talking about, which number are we talking about?
It's affecting both because it's running down that first driveway, hitting the neighbor's house, and then it's running down the other way, hitting the guy in the corner. So it's affecting both foundations.
But you're talking about which apron and which one needs to be fixed?
Yeah, it's the ne- it's, it's the neighbor, not the corner.
Which number?
Three oh nine, is it?
It's three, it is three oh nine. I, I would like our DPW director to take a look and then be, just to give our.
When you done with those pictures, I'd like to give those pictures to him. Jared?
I just was gonna just jump in here and say like, John is correct, him and I do talk about that they could open up quite a box. But also, I believe that the city has the responsibility of moving forward their projects. And if there's curbing, stoplaying the mower, getting buildings to go down past the curb on any street, which then causes these issues. The, the better way of doing the job is to mill it down, so that way when you put it back in, you're retaining the integrity of the curb to not create these issues, but John is one hundred percent correct that, you know, there are several, but I, I know the street you're talking about, you know, that, I don't know if that, yeah, I don't know if that's an approved street, unapproved street, meaning there may not even be curbs, like, you know, the Delaware streets, there's not, it's just been built up so high that, should be about a foot higher than the front streets, so a lot of runs everywhere, so there is no curve. But I think, you know, Director Sprague, moving forward, if we are to repave it, we should be mindful and, and saving the integrity of the curb so that way we're not having these conversations to clean up messes from prior.
Yep.
Because I do, I do agree with, with John, but I also struggle with the fact that I can't convey my water out of my neighbors. It's also illegal for the city to convey their water out to, onto me and cause, cause issues.
So I, I just wanted to bring it to you, commit this committee for discussion tonight, and I'd like to get this moving before this construction season and put a PL in at least.
You're politicating too hard, we are already gonna send it to DPW.
He said, he said two weeks would be fine, so I was gonna ask Tiffany to put a PL in, right?
Well, we'll be back in committee, so nothing.
Yep.
We'll be gone in two weeks, we'll just discuss in the committee.
We gotta get the results first.
Along with a price for blacktop.
Yep.
If that's where we're going.
I mean, I think that Director Sprague is looking for a direction, it should be retaining the water out there with a, with a curb and with as little approach work as possible to just rectify the problem. I don't think we're responsible to replace the entire approach.
No, I definitely agree with that.
I agree with you.
All right, so I think, uh.
So we're good, Director?
Yeah.
All right. And, uh, there was no other commented questions on that one, so moving on, uh, uh, street light, uh, for fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred block of West Henry Street. Uh, there's a few, uh, at, at the least two, pole fifty-six and pole sixty down that way. Uh, every other pole is labeled except those two. Uh, those two are roughly, uh, six poles down there between, uh, Fourteenth and Sixteenth Street. Uh, actually, we can go down to Seventeenth Street, uh, where there is very poor lighting at night and visibility. Uh, this area has been high for a lot of, uh, I'll, I'll say our, uh, our homeless and, uh, our, uh, transients that come in to town, and they like to go into, uh, that wooded area over by the sewer plant. And they also have been coming on, uh, over to the area behind Taste of Pizza and making homes over there. Uh, this has been, uh, a big issue for the constituents down there. Uh, they have all pretty much gotten together and had a lot of conversation and relayed to me, uh, their concerns. They understand that putting up lighting does not solve the problem, but it makes the area visible so that you can see who is down in that area, uh, walking by, uh, those people have better visibility of those people. Uh, while we were waiting during the budget process, I just so happened to, I work over that way, heading to work, and I witnessed a police officer, uh, driving by and then putting his vehicle in reverse and then eventually having to make a U-turn, go back and then put his light on an individual. Uh, so again, uh, I, I, of course, I kept going, but my point is, if there was a street light there, the officer would've had a lot more visibility and, uh, he wouldn't have to go through all those motions, uh, to try to make contact with that individual. So with that being said, uh, the residents are hoping that the city would, uh, agree to put a light on poles fifty-six and sixty. Uh, and for those reasons that I mentioned. Yep, Jared?
I, I'm gonna say good with it for that reason as well, but also with, in pending work on West Henley, you are gonna see an uptick in traffic so illuminated the area for pedestrian safety.
Yep.
That's gonna be important.
Thank you, and, uh, that is a heavily traveled area for, for, for bike riders and for people that are walking and walking their pets. And, uh, I thought of that earlier and I meant to write it down, but I never did.
Well, you could have quite a better thought.
Oh, you're good, thanks, appreciate it. But yeah, safety, you know, committee chair should've thought of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure LED lights are inexpensive to operate anyway, so.
Yep. Any other comments, questions on that one? All right, so we can, uh, bring that in for, for PL, uh, with the required wait dates. All right, moving forward, uh, three sixteen Laurel Ave, this is in, uh, what, fourth?
Fourth, so, yeah, I had actually sent, everyone, hopefully you got it, pictures of, uh, the house in question. It's been one that we've reviewed before. Um, one of the, um, residents who lives in the house next door, um, just passed it, had brought up concerns that probably about a month or so ago, we had a really heavy storm, he felt that it had shifted, was more concerned about the, um, the roof and things kind of sliding, he said, and, and, um, Ryan can correct me, but kind of the interior's kind of come down portions of it. Um, you can see that in the, from the pictures I sent, the, the roof, it's, it's just really quite a mess. And we had, um, they, there had been a, a recommendation from codes that we, um, raise, get rid of two houses, and that was one of them that there was a, a cost attached to it, the other one was, um, on Tenth Street. Um, so I haven't looked at that, but rather just going to the one on Laurel Avenue. Um, when I went down there and took the pictures, the, the house before it, I spoke to them, they also have significant concerns uh, about the safety and, and pieces of, uh, building coming down and stuff, so I'm looking to.
Talk about their big blue house?
Yes, yeah, so I'm looking to, um, revisit this, um, to request demolition of the building at three, uh, sixteen Laurel.
Any questions, woman?
Ryan, is there anything you want to add to that?
So when we originally approached this back in September, yes, it was, we thought it was very dangerous at the time. When I was on vacation the twenty-first, we did have another code officer do a structural assessment of it. He doesn't feel like it's changed that much within the second, last six months. Obviously, we believe that it's still a danger, it should come down, but he doesn't feel like that it's really changed that much to where, I mean, yes, it's potential to collapse, but he doesn't feel like the winds really did anything to it yet.
Was this one of those that was very expensive to bring down, that there were two of them, the roof was, it was like thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars?
So the two houses that was, you have a sheet there and was, the low was eighty-five thousand, right?
For two, four houses.
And I don't know what it was, um, separate or individually, because we did not get that. Do you, do you know if there, oh, you don't have that sheet?
No.
Okay, so the demolition of the two buildings ranged in price from eighty-five thousand to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Hundred eighty-eight?
Yes, so there was a huge disparity between the two, low bid and the, uh, other one. It was eighty-five, um, thousand, one twenty-seven, four, and then one eighty-eight thousand.
Did one have a, a, this in it, or would it be like you can change or demolish?
They will both tend to be treated, treated as a controlled demo, that's why the prices are so high.
Cause you can't go in and kind of do that assessment, it's not safe.
Neither one have an asbestos survey done, no.
And do we, I mean, do we have a price for them individually?
We did not get that, however, I spoke with your whole bit of the day, we said a good educated guess on Laurel would be forty-five thousand.
Okay.
So how do we recoup that money? That's not a city, that's not a city property, right?
Home dream.
Yeah, be aware, it is on tax auction, this, again, this year it started making the deal.
So it could possibly be sold this year, as, as it is?
And the residents are concerned because what's happened, is this the third time?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, it, it, I think they've had, the most recent ones were individuals from New York City, if I remember, purchased it. But it's been, I think, sold at least three times, and so the residents are concerned. You know, when I reached out to a third, um, family there to, to talk to them, they're concerned like, what if somebody else buys it?
The good thing is, I believe the tax auctions went back live in person, is it this year, Ryan?
Next year.
Not, oh, next year?
Yeah, so it is.
It's gonna stop.
Yeah.
It's still on our mind this year.
Um, we just took down a house, did we not, in conjunction, we, we did something with the county?
We did.
Is that right?
Yes.
How much did that cost to take down?
Twenty thousand.
Why can't we work something out like that with the county? We don't have to talk about it in here, but, but I think that, I think if there are some other avenues that could be explored.
There is another manner that we can explore, but if we do that, it's a year out.
Okay, I can, I can wait.
Well, you don't live next to it either, John.
I'm just being a good steward of the financial responsibility, Sonja.
I, I appreciate that.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. It's, it's, it's been there, how many, how, how long's that been sitting there, Ryan?
Uh, it really got to my radar last week, that's when we noticed the roof had collapsed then.
Right, so I mean, I'm, I'm totally, I mean, I've got one in my war too, Sonja, and I'm, I'm totally empathetic about it.
I wasn't, yeah, I didn't want yours to come down.
Yeah, I, I totally get it, right, like, but, I remember we just talked about, we just had some sort of, something with the county and, and were able to do it a lot cheaper than taking two houses down for eighty-five thousand, so, you know.
So.
Could we, could we explore?
Yes.
Other avenues?
Well, I would appreciate if we could explore that and then come back and, and revisit this, um.
I can put both of them on the ground tomorrow, then we can figure out how to clean it up.
We can do that, that's, that's what the question is, right? Bring them down?
Fire training.
Can we do a controlled burn?
Wow, then you end up in the same situation, the South Union Street where, where there's an emergency demo, that we still end up handling, cleaning up cracks.
We need to recoup for that.
Where's the, we're gonna get.
Yep.
We're still litigation.
We're still in that home dream aspect.
Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I, I know we're not gonna recoup our money, it's about minimizing the cost to take it down.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm all about improving neighborhoods, but to take down a house for forty plus thousand dollars is crazy to take down.
But as am I, but when we previously discussed that, my stance would still hold true that people are gonna start banning their, banning their crap holes it's gonna be on the city's dime to take it down.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a way that we can do it, kind of offsetting our financial liability.
Absolutely, I, I'd like to do that, but I also don't think that most of them have been sold at auction three times and with the potential to be sold at a fourth time, or a lot, or more.
All right, is the land, is the land bank still functioning? Is the land bank still pulling some of these properties off the auction and?
Yes, however, when they switched the ten room foreclosures for the county auctions, to where the county's only allowed to make so much, the county's not allowed to just go in and take properties and give them to the land bank like they used to. That's why the last two that got pulled from auction, we're still waiting on them to be demoed because we had to have two separate auctions and then start the bidding process.
And this house is not salvageable in any capacity, I don't think. If somebody bought it, it would truly be sudden scene.
Correct.
Um, Lynn's, by chance, do you know, we have a fund for, uh, demo housing, right? There are line items for that? Seventy-five hundred for that balance for this year?
Let me, let me sure, I think that works.
I mean, I, I'm just thinking about, you know, it's one thing to keep putting things off, but I've always been a, a big proponent of being progressive, progressively active anyway. I think a, as soon as something bad happens, then when you start to go back and do your assessments and everything, the first thing you're saying is, where did we go wrong, why didn't we do this, why didn't we move forward? This has been brought forward to us, he said in September of twenty twenty-four, uh, we have not moved forward because we're still playing the waiting game. In the meantime, I understand the residents are coming forward and saying, listen, you know, we'd like something to get done with this. And I, and I understand that they're anxious, but at the same time, the city doesn't wanna end up inheriting, uh, everyone's torn down, broke down properties. Um, but I would like to see us move forward on one of these, if we put money forward and then, I mean, just like everything else that I've seen since I've been on the council, it's litigation, litigation, then if it has to go to litigation, then that's another one that we'll have to work on getting, at least that's money in the bank, the way I see it, we'll get the money back eventually.
So.
Got it?
Would there be kind of a, a middle point or something with, if one of the property owners adjacent wanted to, um, purchase or with, I'm just trying to say, you know, like what if, so here's my thought, and it may not be anything, but what if, you know, they said, you know, for twenty thousand, we purchase it, that doesn't, that doesn't, but they want the lot, right? Um, but it wouldn't do the whole cost, I'm trying to think of how do we recoup some of those costs and stuff, right? Oh, I'm not, it's not my committee, but I, go ahead.
You're fine, I'm, I'm good.
Ryan, who's the tactical owner of that house right now?
Christopher Aguilar.
Even though it's at foreclosure, is it the county that rightful owner now?
No.
Cause, cause they do the deed transfers act?
They do the deed transfer, it's what you pay for the deed.
So they don't take ownership of it now? So they don't take ownership of it now?
Sort of waiting on us to demo and then they'll take?
Uh, they used to take ownership of them, correct, Ryan? They would take deed ownership, so if you've got your house foreclosed on, the county would take it and deed it to them, they'd transfer the deed, that's why if you look at the records, you'd see that at some point, the county, the county treasurer, and then when it's sold, then they would deed it to the new person. But now because of these, what he was talking about before, if a house sold for a hundred thousand bucks, just rounding up, which is right, and there was twenty thousand liabilities against it, the county was able to keep that. Now, that eighty thousand dollars actually gets returned back to the owner. So all of the profit for the over, that's why they put the reserve at whatever the liability is. To break even, all profits go back, so that's to protect themselves, now they're not deeding it to themselves.
Have you spoken to the neighbors?
No, but I wanted to bring it up here and, and see what options are.
Well, I, I, when we had possession, there were a number of properties that I, but we actually owned it, right? We had a possession where we sold the property to the neighbor for a dollar, and the neighbor demolished it. I mean, if it's up for auction and one of the neighbors was interested, they should go and get at it at auction, and I can't imagine anybody else would, would want something that is in that sort of situation and they'd be able to polish it a heck of a lot cheaper than we.
You are correct, but they'll just have to pay the reserve.
Right, whatever, whatever that is.
Yeah, I don't know what the reserve is on that one.
Eighteen five?
So you gotta buy it for eighteen five, that's, that's what I'm saying. It's all the water bills and the science, everything that's piled up has to be.
And I thought it was like four thousand five.
Yeah, so there's eighteen five plus whatever twenty or thirty to demo it, so now it's really at our cost anyways. So can we, um, explore, as, uh, Oliver Crawford said, the, this, the county to see if there is a, a less costly way? Which I don't know what it is, but I see the face, I don't know what it means.
I can get there for you.
Okay.
So we want to bring it back in two weeks and let Ryan figure out something?
You have seventeen five when you demo.
Seventeen five, I mean, was it your?
What was that?
Seventeen five.
Seventeen five for balance? Seventeen five for, you know?
How many houses are out there in this same capital?
As of right now, these are the two highest priorities that we have that we feel are far exceed anything else that's like this.
And?
I mean, your first and second floor, it doesn't get much worse than that.
So, I hear about the concept.
Yes.
Open floor plan, is that what you're saying?
June first, when does that reset to that, that demo?
Six above the stage.
The stage is about seventeen, so we never use it last year, okay.
I'm just sure a minor, Sonja brought up before the meeting, at the very last committee meeting in May, we're going to move that seventeen five into the demo.
So I, I agree with, uh, Oliver McCall, but we can give Ryan a couple of weeks to try to figure out something and, uh, maybe see if, uh, there's potential for the county to go in half with whatever that process was that you guys were talking about. That flew over my head, I ain't gonna lie, but not interested. So, uh, are we good on that one?
Yeah.
Put it back on two weeks?
Thank you.
Please, Tiffany. And that's it on that topic, all right, JR's yawning, so, uh, no committee reports. Uh, make a motion to adjourn, give it a second.
Second.
Second by McCall, on the favor. Opposed? Two more?
All right, so, uh, called order the youth and recreation committee today, May sixth, please. At seven twenty. Um, please. Note that all older men are present except for older men, Pannis. So, motion to approve the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was way back in October fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Sorry.
All right.
All right. I was already told.
All is in favor, I, I, those, okay. Uh, no unfinished business, um, we have some new referrals for consideration. Uh, so as we come through spring here, we need to discuss the splash park fees. So some ideas that came up was to have, um, like, the time, like, sessions, basically, two to three hour sessions that people pay for instead of just, um, you know, daily, like, unlimited entry like the pool. So, basically, let's say if you have five dollars for a two hour time slot or three hour time slot. I don't know, I'm thinking about the fees, you know, five dollars for twelve and up, four dollars for, you know, maybe twelve and under, like, under twelve, the little littles, like, three and under could be, like, free or even discounted. Some places that I, in just some of my research, and Sonja, I know you researched as well, but there was like a family cap of a certain amount, so, you know, maybe there's like a fifteen or twenty dollar family cap. So I don't know, you know, what anyone's thoughts are, um, just being able to have those multiple time slots, are they flexible for families? And they accommodate a lot of families, uh, so, whether it's twelve to, or, let's say, ten to twelve, or twelve to two, you know, going until like seven or eight P M, or three hour time slots, like, going till eight P M, or accommodate all kind of age groups in those areas. I have lots more notes, I don't know if anybody wants to break into that.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things too that I saw, I looked at a couple, Bethel Park, Babylon Rockport, and then W B Parks, we looked at, got that information, is that, um, almost all of them had a consistent, that there was a, a resident fee and a non-resident fee, right? That, that residents, um, be, because they're paying their taxes and stuff with it, had, um, a little bit of a lower, um, fee than, than non-residents, and they had to show kind of proof that, you know, that they resided within the, the city. So that was one thing. And honestly, it was, it was broad. Some had ten day passes, some had seasonal, some had hour blocks, so it's kind of all over. I like, um, in an ideal world, I would like us to have blocks of time, um, like what John, you sent us, and be able to do online, um, in addition to if people don't have online, although anyone with kids, I think at this point has, has some access because of school with it. To be able to go on and, um, you know, reserve your time ahead of time. And, you know, there were some that allowed you to do it way in advance, some that, you know, one, you had to do it literally almost like that day, which seems a little crazy to me. But again, going back to that one, allowed, you know, like, up to fifteen days in advance if there was a planned visit. So if you had family coming in, then you could guarantee your, your spot. I actually love that idea, but I, I think we want to make it feasible, and so, you know, maybe like, uh, I think, is it ice skating that has a camp for families? I can't remember, I, I thought we did have like a family fee for that. So maybe we want to take a, a, a look at that. And I think perhaps that there might need to be a little, maybe a smaller group too, to, to kind of take a look and come back with some recommendations.
Yeah, some of the other things, so I also saw, like, you could do some pass options, so there was like, you could do a ten, like, session punch card that someone could buy. You could do a season pass and have like an individual family, um, pass. Uh, one of the things I saw is when we talk about, um, being, we want to be equitable and inclusive, you know, resident versus non, non-residence fees, but having a community access day, whether that's once a month where residents can come in for a two hour block, so maybe it's in off-peak time, like, ten to twelve, or, um, you know, where they could come for free. So, um, and that, there's a lot, again, if we're kind of just supporting our residents here, that might not be able to come on a regular basis, but they get the street like once a month, right? That they can bring their families. And, you know, from additional revenue, uh, streams of optional add-ons could be, I don't know what it's going to look like, but maybe there's like shade or cabana rentals that someone could pay extra for. Or, um, because I don't, because I know, you know, go to the Big Bowl, there's a lot of shade, right? So I would pay a lot of money for shade, little shade cabana while my kids are swimming. And then, or, you know, a splat, like a birthday party thing as well.
I just want to say too, looking at, at schools and marketing it to, to schools perhaps for, uh, blocks of time. So, you know, I think there's lots of opportunity here, um, I think we have to kind of fine tune and, and, and maybe do a little more research on that. You know, and I, I also, because people have said, well, are we going to recapture our fees? I, I just want to say that the value to the city is more than what we're going to bring into cover fees. It really is about bringing people into the, to the city and having them frequent our businesses and our eating establishments and bring money into the community in addition to what they will pay for, for the splash park. I have to say, people are excited, they're just kind of like, when is it happening, right? And I think it, right, so there we go. But I think perhaps, um, I mean, my recommendation would be, if everybody would, and, and John, you can tell me how you feel about this, perhaps send us what's your, your thoughts and recommendations, and we can kind of tabulate them and come back with, with that. And also to have Chris Schweri kind of, of give us input as to what he thinks, um, would work. Ideally, I would like to see an online registration and blocks of time, um, I think it's less labor intensive, it's easier to use for families.
It's not like, um, taking kids to the trampoline place, right? You get, I'm coming from twelve to two, and I get a blue bracelet, and then someone who's coming from two to four gets the orange bracelet, you know, there's timed, timed entry. And, and so if I'm com, so a way to manage, right, is if I'm coming at two and I have a blue bracelet on, I know that my, I gotta pay either for another session or, you know.
Bill, is, um, ice skating, when you pay to go ice skating, is that, is that unlimited? Ice skating?
For that block of time?
No, just for the block of time. So it is blocked?
Plus the open hours.
That's, yeah, it's only usually open two hours.
Were the open hours that's longer?
Okay, so you can't go skating from the time it opens till the time it closes?
Right. Yeah, they're, they're in, like, two hours.
Yeah, so it's the same concept. It's blocked, having blocks of time.
So would they, would your idea be that they would block the time and pay in advance?
Yeah, well, they would preserve, like, so if I wanted to bring my, oh, hey, let's go to the splash park on Saturday, I'm going to reserve twelve to two.
Yeah, and pay online.
And pay online, if I wanted to, yeah.
What I was going to say is what recourse would we have if they don't show up then?
They're arguing.
They're not paying it for, yeah, okay.
So, but then who's going to monitor that? Who's monitoring that?
Well, that's a big problem, I don't know.
Well, it's, we're saying that it's a class labor intensive, somebody's got to monitor the red place.
Well, like, I mean, there has to be someone doing admission.
Well, right, but if the idea, as Sonja said, is more of a quality of life, then why overcomplicate it and just say for three bucks, you can go there all day long?
Well, so having the time slots in, I mean, there's going to be limited space, right? So it maximizes revenue, it, um, creates kind of like turnover.
Such a high demand right now?
What's that?
You know right now, out of the gates, that there's going to be such a high demand that you can't just?
Yep.
We're going to create demand. And part of it is marketing, right? Part of that is marketing, and I think that if we're on it now and we're, and we're prepping for it, you know, then we can market it to, like, schools and stuff too.
Say that it's more of a quality of life than, not that, than when nickel and diamond is saying, if you want that extra two hours, it's five more bucks, like, just, it's quality of life then, just charge three bucks, open the thing up and go there on Saturday until you have such a demand that you have to do something like that?
I didn't say quality of life, what I said is it was going to bring people into the community and that then.
Quality of life, same thing. It's the same thing.
Oh, I think it's because it's limited space. I mean, we can't have that nobody, people sit there all day, right? Like, and then, then you have a line waiting for someone to leave so someone else can go in. I think that doesn't make sense.
And what I mean by labor intensive is not checking the bands, I mean, the payment and the registration. And there's ways to manage that, and I think that, that Chris should be part of the discussion, and part of that is, you maybe you close it down for fifteen minutes while you do that changeover, I mean, there's ways to manage it.
So, um, right. I, I just wanted to China, um, the KISS acronym, I, I'm a firm believer in that. I, I would love for us to not outprice our community. Too many times, we have a lot of things come to the city that are very good things, and you really do appreciate them when they come, and then all of a sudden, they price themselves out and then they end up disappearing, and that's the sad aspect, uh, of the city with, uh, some of the businesses that come. With the splash pad, I, I can honestly say I was just excited about it when it came forward as, uh, John, but John and I differed on where we would set pricing. I really would like this to be affordable. I really would like us to be able to cater to everyone and not just, uh, sp, specific, uh, people in certain neighborhoods, right? So, I would like to make this, I do like the, the, maybe a one hour block of free time, community time. Uh, one hour is a lot of time in a, in a pool, in a, in a pool area. Uh, I'm just thinking back to when, just my upbringing, uh, we couldn't wait for the summer months to come and the amount of time that we spent in a pool and, uh, and, and playing in the street and stuff like that. I think having a family pass is a great idea, having a residential and a non-residential is a great idea. If you want to start coming up with anything outside of that, now we're talking some type of special, like a ten day or these hour blocks and all this other stuff. That's where I do agree with JR, that once, once you see that type of demand, I think you can go to something like that. But for now, just to start out, I think we should just have one fee for above twelve, one fee for below twelve, and have a family, family fee of four, family of four, maybe. And, uh, and then from there, just go from there, just a starter, starter pack with that, and, and go from there. If, if anyone wants to go any more extensive, I mean, by all means, but I, this isn't, uh, King's Dominion or, I mean, you guys don't know what King's Dominion is, do you?
We do, it will be.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to.
We're going to make it King's Dominion, well, it's going to take some years to make it King's Dominion.
With additional parking.
We're, uh, Darien Lake, there you go, for the, for the locals here, Darien Lake style. Um, I, I think we need to make it to where, uh, for those people that are coming from Cuba or, or Allegheny County, that were going to go to Walimere, they can stop here. I think this will be a, a great stop, you know, and then they can enjoy some of the amenities here, check out the park and enjoy themselves there, but, yeah, I, I don't think we need to get too crazy with it right now.
So, I, if I can, so, just to bounce in, I, I mean, I, I don't think we differ that far apart, contrary to, like, public opinion, I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary to charge ten or fifteen or twenty dollars. Uh, and I don't think it's necessary to re-imbue the wheel. Lily Pad Springs proved this concept, they continue to prove the concept, although it's a different demographic, it's the same exact setup. And they do have, and I think it's worth exploring, uh, if Chris and the mayor could explore what the online reservation system, what that looks like, if our website is capable of integrating something like that, because it allows people to, you know, obviously, there's fire code, obviously, there's a limitation on how many people can be in a certain, I mean, it's a fenced in area. And what you don't want to just have happen is people drive from Cuba or from Port Allegheny or from wherever, and they get there and we're already at Quokka, right? And they're, and so they're like, well, And they're, and so they're like, well, okay, I, I guess I gotta turn away. Is there a, a way to maximize, and, and we're always talking about efficiency? So just, you know, keeping people happy and moving, um, Lily Pad Springs charges four dollars for residents for a two hour time slot and seven dollars for non-residents. And I don't know if that's necessarily, uh, what we're looking at, is it, is it five and seven? I would be fine with just setting it one price, keep it, you wanna keep it simple, just keep it, you know, five bucks, a, a person, whatever. Um, but, the, the, you know, and again, I, I think that's relatively affordable, uh, whether it's for two or three hours. There's really no need to go anything beyond that. Uh, and as we're investing almost now a million dollars, uh, over a million dollars into that, over a million dollars into the, um, you know, into the pool, I, I love the idea of having, whether it's one, one time a week, a different timeframe, having it for free. I think that's awesome, I think that's a great idea, there's way to, ways to integrate that. Uh, Lily Pad Springs also does like a certain time slot that they use, uh, for, um, people, for, for children that have, um, sensor issues, right? And so then they, 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 they kind of turn off like the overhead water issue, uh, you know. So, I mean, there's different things, right, to, yeah, let's make it inclusive. Uh, but I think a, a good way to do that is, number one, the same way you and I, everybody, they go to the movies, uh, whether you have it on stimulus Tuesday, that's the only time I take my family is when it's, it's, it's cheap to go, all right, uh, or cheaper, uh, but, you know, we still go online and we, we select the seats, right? So, is there that functionality, what would that cost, what does that look like to make this as efficient as possible? So if people from out of town, and, and ideally, I think that's what we're all hoping for, can go ahead and say, you know, there's a maximum, whatever the fire code is, of a hundred people in that space or seventy-five people or whatever, you know, can you, can you go ahead and pre-book those slots? Um, they do it in ti- in two minute and, two hour time slots, they actually take a half hour break. So I think, I don't know, Vernon said something about that. They don't even use bracelets, they, they, they empty it, all right, from eleven to one?
They empty it.
And they empty it all up, right, okay? And so now one thirty is the next time slot, one thirty to three thirty, everybody goes, it allows people maybe to clean up and keep things, uh, put everything back, et cetera. I mean, so is there a systematic, simple way, affordable, um, but all the ones that, you know, it's not just something you walk into and you, you splash around in. Obviously, um, I would strongly advise that we, we consider implementing time sessions, whether it's something like an online platform or even if you just walk up and you have the, the time slots posted, I think we really need to consider that. Uh, and then I would say, if the demand doesn't meet that and if we wanna go away from that, but I just don't know how you factor in on Saturday, it's, it's hot and, uh, all of a sudden, people from all over show up and it's, it's, it's full. And so now you just, what do they say about customers, right? Like, you have one shot to earn, like, keep a customer. And they show up and it's packed and there's no recourse for them, they turn around, they walk away and say, well, we're not coming back. So I think it's worth exploring, if nothing else. Bill, can you, can you and Chris look into that?
Yes.
So if, like Sonia said, if, if you could, each of you, like what you're thinking for like price and if you could just kind of filter those through the email so that we can just kind of get a collection of everything? Um, and, you know, your, you know, views on whether it's, you know, open all day or, or whatever the time slots. Um, I am, I am a firm believer in creating demand and when you have limited things, when you have li- limited things available and they sell out, it creates demand. And so, and we have nothing, the pool's closed, we have French hot. But, um, so when that opens this summer, I mean, automatically, I mean, just from the, the newness of it is gonna draw people in, but then also, you know, if we have a great summer, there's not, we don't have those things going on right now in the city. So that's going to be our only thing happening as far as from a water or something. And the pool, I think, used to do those types of things, right? Like you could swim from twelve to two thirty or whatever, they clear everybody out, then you come back at like four and you could swim for a couple hours and longer, so.
And I, just to circle back, because some of you weren't on the council, but I, we actually did call and talk to people at Lily Pad Springs and the manager of the facility there. And these were lessons learned that, that they had already gone through and, and suggested that we explore, so.
It's a cute name, you should call it Lily Pad Springs down there.
So if you all could just kind of send your ideas and thoughts, the email, that would, I would appreciate that. And then we can just go from there, whether it's creating a, a smaller group to kind of sort it out and bring it to the council, I don't know how you wanna move forward with that, but.
So I might say after, um, after the Alderman kind of sent it and Bill has a chance, the mayor has a chance to meet with Chris, then maybe we can take those ideas and meet with, with Mayor and Chris and kind of put something together to come back to the council? So that we're not all over the place?
Yeah, and that we don't just come back and say, have we had any updates? Yep, does that sound good? Yes, to meet with Chris?
Are you?
Yeah, I'm talking to him.
Yes.
Yeah, so you can get with Chris and then we'll generate this feedback from here and then we can get together, Sonia, Ryan, Chris.
Send it on, I'll get with Chris and in the meantime, I'll have Chris do some research and go from there.
Sounds good.
So we wanna put this back on for, um, do we have any anticipated opening date?
No, it's not, it's, we know now it's not gonna be Memorial Day.
Okay.
We're working on, excuse, we're gonna work on a new timeline, so.
So we have a minute, is what I'm hearing?
Right.
Give us, give us a month.
Okay, let's put Dave on the line.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on that? Put your hand up or you just?
Ooh, I just remember Johnson, a text telling me Dave not to nitpick everything.
We're moving on.
We said to meet again.
We're moving on, thank you. Okay, so the, just wanna put on the radar for the friend, uh, French hot, uh, park proposal. I know we talked about this, though, probably in October of twenty twenty-four. Um, and some of the things that were on there, and I didn't print it out for everybody, but, um, I know we've had some, uh, change of directors. So I don't know where we kind of left things off as far as, I know where we left things off, the mayor and the DPW director, we're gonna look and see what things could be done in-house and what needed to be, um, you know, outside, contracted out. Um, but I would say, as we're coming into park season now, the priorities in that park, we have to replace the drinking fountain. I know Brad had it on the budget, but it has to be installed pre-summer, like it has to be before summer's over. Um, that's not working there, it hasn't worked for years, I mean, I think that's a priority. And also one of the major priorities that came out of meeting with the residents was the signage, um, at the park as far as the park rules. That has been altered by people that come through there from the community. Um, one has been ripped down. So I would say those things right now are the two major priorities that were important to the parkgoers and the residents around there as well. The other things, the other beautification things, like, you know, do we reinvent the horseshoe pit for like the dog park and repainting the basketball court, you know? Those are important, but I would say the priorities right now is the signage as far as park rules and the, um, drinking fountain and maybe the dead trees.
Yes, there's, there's at least two.
Two dead trees at, at least that are clearly, clearly.
Over the thousand.
Yes, one is, yeah, and then there's a, there's one by the, um, where the signage is for the park rules. There's another that's kind of, uh, past the pavilion, I think, and then there's one on the other side of the park. I would say having, um, basketball, um, netting up?
Nets.
Right, because there's not even, uh, netting right there. Um, just to give you some idea, we, we talked about the dog park, um, post the, uh, park rules. Kind of if we could freshen up some of the things, add swings if we can to the older swing set, right? Some of the things that they asked for, um, uh, refresh the existing entrance onto Green Street, but, um, may have a simpler concept. We did talk about the, the dog park there and some lighting because the, the poles are already there and the, the electricity's already ran to that, um, so that we could have some lighting. And that might also help to deter some of the other issues that we've had in the park. I'm talking about police and police safety also. And we were going to, we had met with the mayor and, and take the, um, money, which I believe was fifty thousand that was originally for that Fourth Street entrance, right? Um, and reallocate it to be able to utilize it, to be able to do more within the park. Um, but signage down on, um, Union Street seemed to be kind of one of the priorities so that we would have something nice there that would say, welcome to this wonderful park we have.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know if, I know we lost this often twenty twenty-four, I don't know what, if you and Ben had spoken or if anything kind of came of that, I don't know if there was any updates, because we didn't ever put it back on the agenda after that, and then we got into winter and. No?
Check it out.
Um, and I can send, um, uh, Director Sprague the proposal that we, you know, I can resend that proposal out, um, if that would be helpful to kind of see what we were thinking. Um, and maybe just those priorities, I said, the drinking fountain, I think the signage and the netting on the hoops that they could use and if we could do lighting. I mean, those would be the, I guess, the four major things, that would at least help with the security and the safety and, and the, the, um, usage, I guess, that's happening.
Maybe we could do the small dog park, actually, it's already fenced in, it just would take like a little door, take out the horseshoe pit thingies and, and a bench and a re- a garbage receptacle.
The water fountain, I, I think we should be all set with that coming because I remember Brad stating that, uh, I can't remember the exact words, but that's something that, I don't know, should be already ordered?
It's in the budget.
Or on the budget to, to get ordered.
Right.
The sign should be something simple and easy that the city should be able to do. Uh, I mean, it, and use tamper resistant screws to, to reinstall, to put it back up. Uh, I don't know if you wanna go with some type of Plexi or something to cover it, but, I mean, it, that just all goes to, you know, the community taking pride in what they have, right? If we're gonna reinvest in it and, and bring it up to par, it'll be up to our community to help keep it that way. The basketball netting, I mean, that's, hell, I'll go to Walmart and go buy those and put them up myself. I might need a ladder though, which I'll probably fall, so.
Safety issue?
Yeah, Mayor, hold me up.
How you trying to do that?
Uh, the swing set, swing set, uh, the dead trees, uh, the dog park. To me, now you're starting to talk about, uh, project, that's gonna require some money. So that maybe that's something where that should be collaborated, brought together and that's totally separate, keep it totally separate from those other small things that'd be taken care of immediately. I mean, if you wanna see, a lot of people always say they wanna see some results, they wanna see things, but these are things that you can put in and get instant results, keep them separate because swing set ain't gonna happen anytime soon. Those three or four dead trees, unless the wind blows the correct way and, and creates a, a dead limb, the trees are gonna still be there and, uh, that fifty K has been there since I've been on the council just about.
Right, that's, that's my thing, is if we can do these little things right now, that shows that we're, we're.
I thought you were, that fifty K, I thought you were buying some benches down there or some俱樂部.
No, they used money, they used money from the Miniano Fund for that, so that's already been done. Um, but, so this we reallocated last year, we, we put PL in and reallocated those funds. Um, so, yeah, I mean, so we have at least a small amount of funds to get some of these small things done, like you said, and I know Brad did say a budget time that he, they have, they have, they've put that money aside to order those, I don't know if they've been ordered, but, you know, maybe connecting with him to see if we can, if they haven't been ordered, so.
We could get that installed in the next one.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah. Um, but, uh, so I think, um, you know, what I'll do is I'll send, uh, the proposal back out with those kind of action items highlighted of where we can get started now, kind of before summer is here and then go from there.
And then maybe we can get a timetable for the other things along with, um, the cost. Because we do have fifty thousand to be able to, to do some of those things, some which, you're right, um, Alderman Robinson can be done in-house. Um, and then look to see how far we can spread the rest of the money.
Mayor, maybe Sonia and I could be with you and Director Sprague just to kind of talk about that timeline and what that might look like down the road.
We're gonna block out meeting times.
Yeah. Every week, thirty minutes. Um, and then the last thing on here was the Branner Stadium uses marketing. I did not put this on the agenda, so I don't know who did.
Well, I mentioned it.
So maybe it's me.
Okay.
You know, we, we've talked about revenue and, and how to, one, how to generate revenue, but also how to bring individuals into the city. We used to have, um, concerts there, we no longer, I mean, most of the time it just kind of sits there. Um, but I'm looking to say, you know, as we look at marketing, you know, how do we market, uh, Branner Stadium? To bring in maybe some, you know, whether it's, uh, outdoor concerts, et cetera. So I, I guess that's where I'm at with things, you know, how do we, how do we do that? We have a great concert series that, um, is local providers, local con- um, acts that, uh, are both now at, uh, Oak Hill and down at Lincoln. That's absolutely wonderful, it's well attended, Chris does an amazing job with that. Um, but how can we, how can we market Branner Stadium so that, um, it's used to its fullest potential? I guess that's where I'm at with things. And so ideas?
Um, a couple of things here. Uh, one, I, I think this is a topic that should be directed towards community development. I, I don't think we have the expertise, the time, the know-how to dive deep into this. I agree that Branner Stadium should be, uh, marketed to, I, I do recall, uh, going to Arizona and there was gonna be a country thing here, there was something, someone came here, I missed it. Oh God, I missed the country thing, but, uh, I can't stay in country. Um, but I think it was a good thing because it was advertised, it was brought in, I heard there was a great turnout. Um, and, uh, something else with this, the casino has people come in to that area and does shows all the time. How can we go about piggybacking and maybe draw them down the road? It's only fifteen minute drive. If we can get those same people to come here and have a place for them to perform, for them to act, for them to do their show, maybe at Branner Stadium, then we can generate the same revenue. That person's already in the region, you can capitalize on that. Uh, to me, that is something that I believe we can use Branner Stadium for, even if we, it does have a stage, right? In the back corner, is that something temporary or something brought in or, or filtered? I mean, if there's some, if there's some way of having a temporary stage and, and setting up to where people can come in and fill the field. Um, I, I understand that we have a, a minor league or whatever you wanna call them that, that plays there, uh, seasonally, uh, and maybe practice seasonally, but.
plays there seasonally and maybe practice seasonally, but proper scheduling of between that and Olean High School and some of the other events that we have there, proper scheduling, we can, we can make this work and utilize that stadium a little more efficiently and make that stadium, make money for the city, generate revenue. So that's just my thought, but as far as the marketing aspect, yes, I think community development, whatever committee is out there that, that works on that, that would be great if they can work with Salamanca, Seneca and, and get some of those acts to come right down the road, fifteen minutes, very next day, perform again, they earn, they earn whatever and then move on.
And I think at this point in time, we're, you know, we're not looking to this year, we're looking to, to next year to be able to do that, but that gives us some time to, to plan.
Any other information or feedback?
Back in the day, I remember that Harvey Needy's Beach Boys were here and I think Leonard Skinnerd was here and the stadium was packed.
And again, that benefits our businesses, our restaurants, so, you know, I, I think.
Yeah, you're right, Dave, and there was good crowds there, that was with outside promoters that promoted it, so.
Somebody named Fenner, I think.
What's that?
I think the promoter was Fenner, somebody.
Yeah, Fenner, yes. And, but that was the, the cost of the city was, you know, there was no direct cost to the city because it was the promoter running and that. If you're talking about these ads at the casino, you're talking some big money and we'd have to put that money up and then hope to get the revenue back from the crowd. So, so it's going to take a lot of thought and, and to work on all of this and, you know, do you want, you know, do you want, who was the comedian that was down there?
Jacob.
Who?
Jacob was just down there after him.
There's someone coming down.
Yeah.
I saw there's, there's.
I don't know what they, how much they put up or how much it costs for them, but you're, you're talking some, some, some good money to bring in acts like that. Then there's, you got different levels of acts too, so, but it, it's worth looking into as where it's, I think the right place for it to be is under economic development tourism.
Yeah. Even if you go with, you two were just talking about with the promoter, if, if you can go with a promoter, if, if they know that, hey, that stadium is available, you bring the act, you bring the people here, we have amenities, we have hotels, we have the food, you know, we have the services. Our local businesses stand to make money from that and, and we stand to make money from the sales tax revenue. So I, I think that's a great idea too. If we can, whatever way that we can sell it to say, hey, we have a place that is underutilized, please utilize it. We will maintain the key because we're bringing revenue into the city and we can go from there. I think that's a good idea.
Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, committee reports, none. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Or, motion second by all of the members in favor.
Call board's opinion playing for Tuesday, May sixth. Let the record show, all are not present. Session of Chairman Pence making motion to approve minutes of previous committee meeting. Anyway, second, could I go second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Forney. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carried. No unfinished business, new referrals, we got a land swap, Maple Street abandoned and High Salt Park. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we, actually, we've been discussing this for several years now with Jeff Bell of Solapoxi and as, I don't know if everybody knows, but High Salt Park is actually his, Solapoxi's land and he leases it to us for like a dollar a year. So, but he has land on the north end of his building that he wants to change his whole front entrance and it's, it's actually a Maple Street, it's a paper street. So we started the process and actually John, John, John Hart was working on this and then it just got kind of set aside and now he's, Jeff has resurrected this and what he wants to do is for us to abandon that, that section of Maple Street, which runs from the railroad, well, what's?
Parallel to the road, right.
Yeah, parallel, there it is, that's the name of a little street there. And then over to.
Is that the stretch between Franklin and Brown?
Yeah.
Right behind his building?
Yeah, yeah, there's a section there. And then what he would do is deed, the, the land swap would be and then we would get the park, but we, we maintain everything within that. So Bridges is looking into that. We just wanted to get this on your radar, that we would give any more of this to you as we proceed here and we'll get you more information as we proceed through the process here. Okay, questions?
Next, we have an easement, Olean Union Sales.
Yeah, we have been approached by Olean, Olean Union Sales to buy a, a portion of Franchot Park, so it would help them in their expansion that they're having down there on South Union Street. So there's a section that juts out from the park, I think it's about a two-hundred-foot section there. Tiffany, do you remember the language of it?
No.
Okay. But anyways, in talks with, with, talks with Kerry Kerber and talks with Bridget Marshall, that would take us to abandon a portion of, of the park. And then, as you know, with, with the parkland, you have to replace it with, I think it's twice the size of what it is. So we, in talking with Bridget and Kerry, we thought the easiest way to do this was to, was to be, to give Olean Union Sales an easement so they can use that piece of land, similar to what, I don't know if you remember what we did with the garage down at Boardman Park, garage that was found to be, when the people went to sell a house there, the garage was found to be on parkland and the city gave them an e, we gave them an easement that if anything ever happens to the garage, that it reverts back to, you know, the easement is now the boarding, that would be, that would be city or parkland again. So Bridges is working on, on that easement, we're going to just make you aware of this and we're bringing that, we're bringing that forward to the council as we, as we move along here. It would help them out and make it a lot easier. It's kind of the timeframe to get things through the state for the, for the selling of the parkland is going to be, you know, it's going to be a long time. So by doing the easements, going to give that, them what they need, as it's on the south, what would be the, the western, I'm sorry, the eastern part of, behind Union Sales, it's back there, it's not anything that was as vital to the park, but it would help them out. And by going the easement route, we can do that without, without going through the process of, of abandoning that piece of land and then having to create more land to, to there.
Isn't that back in there where that frisbee golf is now?
Well, it's, it's all fenced in, so it wouldn't be where frisbees would be used. It's back in that area, oh yes.
Comments, questions?
Kind of be back where that one tree is, is dead too.
Yep, it is. Okay, seeing none, we've got no committee reports, I'm going to motion to adjourn, could I go second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman McCall, all in favor. Wait a minute, I apologize, I have a, I have a rich on here. I actually need to make a motion to enter executive session, discuss personnel discipline matter. Could I go second? Seconded by Alderwoman Forney, all in favor? I oppose, motion carrying, we'll head.